Welcome to the March 1st meeting of the Penfield Board of Education. This meeting is called back to order at 6:37 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I'd like to lead him to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is recommended that the board approve the March 1st, 2022 agenda submitted. So may have a motion and a second that the agenda, March 1st, 2022 be approved as submitted.
So moved, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the board approve the consent agenda, including the approval of the minutes of February 8th as 2022 was submitted, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee on Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, and the request to approve the following bidders that you have presented there, and the approval of the request to dispose unserviceable textbooks. So may have a motion and a second that the consent agenda be approved.
So moved, second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. And which we, today, we go straight to the student representative report. Lila Harvey, would you please tell us what's going on?
Yeah, of course. So beginning off with the district, of course, last week was February break, so many students took advantage of the time to relax and even travel, with students at the high school going on a trip to Greece. So trip highlights included sightseeing in Athens, visiting where the Olympics began, and seeing the Parthenon. This trip was actually Mrs. Brooks' 20th trip, taking students to different countries. Best buddies made Valentines for their friends and family. The hockey team tied with Victor and were both named co-sectional champions. varsity cheerleading came in third place at their sectional competition. The robotics team donated non-perishables and 1,750 pairs of socks to the Dimitri House. And tickets for the spring musical, Mamma Mia, are now on sale, both online and for purchase at the high school. Key Club and the Random Acts of Kindness Club partnered together to create flyers with positive messages to brighten someone's day that are posted around the school. Science Olympiad came in third place at the regional competition and will be competing at states in two weeks. At Bay Trail, students in the enrichment program visited the Garth Fagan Dance Company and were able to get a preview of their performance. At the elementary schools with Scribner, kindergartners celebrated their 100th day of school by dressing up as if they were 100 years old and had fun doing crafts and activities related to the number 100. At Cobles, because of the Super Bowl, 4th and 5th graders played football-themed music in music class. At Harris Hill, Mrs. La Fountain's class read about Amanda Gorman and discussed many of her works and her messages regarding the importance of change. And in Ms. Ramsey's class, they designed and built their own bridges and tested how many pennies their respective bridges could hold. At Indian Landing, Mrs. Kaiser's class practiced community building by sharing what they love about their class. And during Indian Landing's career night, Melissa Mueller Douglas presented about her own experiences of being an entrepreneur and the process of creating her own app, Chocolate Mindfulness. And another guest was Dr. Cropper, who is an aerospace engineer. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for Lila? Yep, good, thank you very much. Which brings us again right to the superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam.
Great, thank you. Yeah, this evening we have some student staff honors. I have just a couple of updates and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates as we continue to build towards our budget vote in May. So National Merit finalist, congratulations to our PHS senior Catherine Healy, who had moved on to become a finalist in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Competition. Science Olympiad brought home third place in the regional competition in qualifying for the state finals on March 18th at LeMoyne College. The Go Red campaign over at Cobles, they raised $173 for American Heart Association. And Have a Heart, Scribner students and families collected and donated their, for the Penfield food shelf during their Have a Heart drive in February. And the PHS Student Advisory Council held the drive to collect food and supplies for the families who were recently displaced by the fire at the pines of Perrington, which I just want to note that as superintendents, I appreciate Brett Provozzano in terms of the work they did. We reached out as well in terms of how we could support any of their students. And I just love that fact that when unfortunate things happen, including in a district next to us but are not our students or residents, the fact that our students really stepped up and it was their idea, I just think it's so great, so. And then the Cobles food drive, Karen Council donated food to the Penfield food shelf during the month of February. And then I just have updates. Believe it or not, I am once again going to talk about COVID-19 as I've done for the last two years at every board meeting. And I know our community is aware that the governor announced that masks will become optional for K-12 schools starting tomorrow, which is Wednesday, March 2nd. The following data points were referenced in her decision. 98% drop in the positive cases since the peak in January 2022. 51 consecutive days of a downward trend. Seven-day average, which is currently a 1.7%, compared to 23% back at the January peak. Declining hospitalization rates for 48 consecutive days. High vaccination rates among adults and children. As of 2:00 PM, and I can change that because I've been monitoring my email, as of 6:44 PM, we are still waiting for official written guidance from New York State as well as an FAQ document that they were, they will provide. I will just say thank you to our board and our administrators, our teachers, our staff, our parents, our students, because March 13th, which is rapidly approaching, is the two-year date since I was, held a press conference to say, "We think we're going to be able to stay open." And then Monday, we were closed for the rest of the year. So, you know, there is definitely frustration that decisions are made without the guidance to help us as schools, but we've been used to this. This has been two years of this. There's a lot of moving parts, I'm sure. And so, you know, we continue to update our COVID-19 webpage every Wednesday with all active COVID cases in the district. The numbers I have up now are just for the month of February. So we started on February 2nd with 41 active cases. The following week, on the 9th, it was 28. February 16th, it was 13. And on the 23rd, which was during break, it was 11 cases. And so that is a 0.2% infection rate of active cases in our district. And that's simply just taking the 11 active cases and based on the number of staff and students we have district-wide. And so while masking for staff and students will become optional starting tomorrow, March 2nd, we will maintain our other safety protocols such as our classroom sanitizing, hand washing, hand sanitizer stations. We'll remain in regular contact with our county health officials and will communicate any changes or adjustments as required. We understand that, that the guidance that's forthcoming is going to say that the counties do have some ability to make masks maybe mandatory or put other things into place based on the transmission rate in their county. So our transmission rate, I met with Dr. Mendoza and members of the Health Department today, is low. We're in the low moderate range. Our, we continue to look at our health officials for guidance and they are also comfortable with a move to optional masking based on hospitalization rates, our vaccination rates in the area, and our cases. And so we're going to keep monitoring, but right now we're looking at this as really, the biggest change now is masking from required to optional. An email did go out prior to this meeting to our community that it, that also includes, as our understanding is, buses. So buses would also be optional. We weren't sure about that. And we will, you know, continue to monitor and update as needed. We do have, and this was shared with families, we do have from the county and state, a number of KN95 masks, both for adults and they refer to as pediatric masks for a smaller face. Those are in all of our nurses' offices and staff who want to wear one of those masks or students can just stop in and get one and we'll monitor those numbers. We're also continuing to get from the state at-home tests, which we will continue to share out and provide. The guidance that we're awaiting, we're not sure, but our understanding is that there will be changes to isolation, quarantine, how if you have symptoms, if you need a PCR test in order to return to school, we believe those things will change as well as distancing requirements in schools. But until we can get that guidance and really digest it and look through it and understand it, our, really, the only change you'll see coming into school tomorrow is that students, staff may choose not to wear a mask. And so we'll continue to keep you updated as we go through. Questions?
Board members, questions or comments? Lisa.
I have a question. If a parent wants to get one of the KN95 or whatever, what are we doing?
They're KN95s.
KN95s, thank you. For like a younger student, should they email the nurse or call or how, how would they do that?
Yep, I would. So if they're, want their child to pick one of those masks up in the nurse's office, they could just reach out to the classroom teacher or the principal, however they feel, and will send the student down or deliver it to the classroom based on the school. It's a great question.
Thank you.
Yep. And I, and just so you know, because I thought you were going to ask a different question, which is that we don't have enough masks to provide to anybody, it'd just be students and staff, but they're still providing those through the county and state at certain locations. Pharmacies, Wegmans are still receiving those and you can get three at a time from those locations.
I do have a question.
Catherine.
You had mentioned that the state is giving counties leeway or whatever. So do you know if the county is going to act as one for all districts? Or if, if cases go up here, there, there's a smattering over in this district or that? Will that count for the whole county or do you know how that's going to work?
So I think I would tell you that without the guidance, I can't speak specifically.
Oh, that's true.
But in speaking with the county, they, and Adam Bello spoke, they are not looking to add anything to our knowledge in terms of making any requirements for the county.
Okay.
In terms of what happens at each individual school, just like they've been doing from the beginning of COVID, is sort of each situation is, will be looked at. Now, what's interesting is that, you know, the state and, and therefore the county has really backed away from the quarantining in terms of that contact tracing. And if you remember back like two years ago, if you were around somebody, you were getting quarantined for 10 days. Now that the vaccination rates are much higher, really following the Omicron strain is that it is, you know, not impacting those with vaccinations and our students vary, you know, not as, it's not as severe.
Yeah.
And so we don't see or believe that there'll be like a full contact tracing, but really more of that communication that if you feel there's a need or you're worried that you were near somebody, it's those home tests that we're getting. Also, the town, the town of Penfield, has received a large number of those tests and they'll be delivering those to the Penfield library and being, sharing those out as well. So it really starts to, to really, and Dr. Mendoza mentioned this and I talked about it last meeting, is that shift from pandemic to endemic.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you look at it like the flu and you, and you say, okay, so if you've been around somebody with the flu, you probably are going to monitor your symptoms. If you're, you know, if your, if your spouse or your child has the flu and you start feeling a little funny, then maybe it is the flu and you might want to stay home and you might want to go see the doctor. Or had, in this case, take a, take a COVID at-home test.
Right.
So that's where we are right now. And I will say that I've shared from day one that although my title says doctor, that is not a medical doctor and I'm not here to argue, debate sort of COVID and what we're doing, why we're doing it, but we are going to continue to follow those state mandates. And at this point, it's, it's optional masking starting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Chris.
So I know we're still waiting on guidance from the state. Are we still following the flow charts that were in place? If so, let's say I have a COVID symptom, do I need to test as a student negative, do I need a negative PCR test to return to school?
So that's the question we don't know, to be very honest. So right now they, and we got to wait on the guidance. There has been discussion that maybe an at-home test could be used and then it really gets back to the trust factor, right? So, so we don't want people to come to school sick and, and people don't want to come to school sick. And I think as parents, the piece of, you know, hanging on to your kid if they have the flu makes sense. So, but what we're finding and talking with the County Department of Health is a number of the kids with symptoms now, wasn't this way before, but like in the beginning of January, but a lot of the students with symptoms or adults with symptoms, it's not turning out to be COVID, right? Because of everything we talked about that the governor used as her data metric points on why we're moving to optional masking. So that really is the question, I think, is, is going to be really important that we don't have that answer. But right now, if you have symptoms, you know, especially if they're severe, it would be, it would be going home and potentially needing a COVID test. But be really clear, that's the, one of those big questions we don't have an answer to until that guidance comes out.
Thank you.
All right. So I just wanted to add, I think, and just repeat, since we really came up to this point, what we had said at a previous meeting is, again, the guidance, the timing of the guidance is not what we would like it to be. And on top of that, when it does come out, it may, there may be areas of ambiguity that we need clarification on. So just because it comes out tomorrow doesn't mean we know exactly what to do tomorrow. So we ask people just to be patient as we try to figure out what's going on. And as Tom said, he talks to the county, we, we go back to the state because everyone will have the same questions and we will get clarification. And the place to get those answers is on our district webpage, not Facebook.
I think that's a very fair mark. And I would just mention too, is that as we look to, look at the guidance and look at the FAQ document and try to determine how we make things happen in school, because every school, even now, looks a little different. The one thing that was always the same was universal masking. So now it's, it's optional. So the one piece that we'll continue to look at is right now, the only change is masking. Everything else, we're going to continue to try to keep in place until we can look at that guidance, digest it, and make decisions. And we'll communicate, like you said, with our Facebook and through emails to our, our staff, students, and families. Thank you.
Okay.
I will now turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
Good evening, board. Hope everybody's doing well. I have some budget development updates for you this evening. So here we are in the budget development process. We're into March now. We have a relatively brief update tonight on both the expenditure and revenue side. Not a lot of new information as it pertains to last meeting, but we do have some new information. So we have upcoming meetings, March 22nd. We'll have further budget, budget information. Hopefully at that point, we have an idea of what the state budget's going to look like. Typically, the Senate and the Assembly release their one-house budgets somewhere in the middle of March. So that'll give us kind of good indications where the legislative budget is progressing, moving into April. In our meeting on April 12th, we'll have a budget to consider for the board to bring to the community and the May vote come May 17th. And our budget hearing before that will be on May 3rd. So we're, we're moving through the process. So what's going on? We have started the initial request for services relating to the BOSI's budget. Current estimates were revised downward that you'll see this evening. About $200,000 relative to what we thought they were going to be. So, so positive development there. We're still monitoring learning, learner needs. March is a busy time of year for annual evaluations. We're monitoring enrollment information. As a data point, at this point, we have about 205 kindergarten registrations and we're expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of like 335 by the time we get to September. So still a ways to go there. We always try to get people to register as early as possible, but it's one of those things that we really, it's almost like a daily process. They were really trying to monitor those. And then the associated staffing supports based on class sizes and student needs. So over the course of the next month, we'll have a clearer picture of what that all looks like and how it pertains to the budget. We have ongoing advocacy efforts. I know it's been a busy month for NISBA and ISCS and ASBO. And as you know, we have ongoing collective bargaining with some of our units set to expire at the end of this fiscal year. So here's the all-up, all-in functional domain look at next year's projected budget as it stands here on March 1st. So these are the different cost code centers, so to speak, across the district. We have Board of Education costs of $10,000. This is a projected increase as it relates to the streaming services, the video packages for these meetings. Central office relates to the superintendent's office, the business and finance team, the human resource team, director of communications, legal auditing services, up about $150,000. Central services, we'll kind of unpack a little bit more this evening. It relates to operations and maintenance, but also has a small sliver of our security here at the district. We've invited our director of facilities, Mr. George English, who in a few moments will come up and speak a little bit about their operation and the board will have an opportunity to ask him many questions as it relates to their finances or just the operational issues they're running into this year. So central services, as I said, we'll, we'll touch on in a minute, but a big projected increase of almost half a million dollars. Special items primarily relates to our BOSI's administrative costs. It's about $800,000 of the 1.1 million associated there. Curricular administration relates to all of the main offices in our six schools. It also includes the Office of Equity and Access and the Office of Curriculum and Instruction and all the associated professionals that work in those different offices. Function 21 relates to teaching in school. So this is just all of our classroom instruction, all of the, the teachers, the professional learning, the materials, the supplies, the BOSI's costs that go into just day-to-day instruction in our classrooms. Special programs includes both students with disabilities and vocational, occupational education programs. So this is an area where I still think the number is a little bit conservative. I think in the course of the next month, we'll have a better understanding of what this looks like. We are seeing a big jump in projected enrollment in the career and technical education, potentially 20 kids. So these are wonderful programs. They run through BOSI's, you have New Visions for Health and there's some really positive things there, but they are expensive placements. They're about $10,000 each, so you're talking about a $200,000 line item jump. Instructional media relates to our libraries and our instructional technology programs. Pupil services is all the wraparound supports that our students receive. That's the guidance office, that's psychologists, that's social workers. It also relates to our co-curricular clubs and our, and our scholastic athletics. Transportation, we did a deep dive last time. Registration is just our census enumerator. Employee benefits, up a little over 1.5 million dollars. Debt service, as we discussed last time, seeing a significant decrease this year, almost 8% or half a million dollars. And then those inter-fund transfers that go to the special aid fund to cover special education costs during the summer and any shortfall with the food service operation. So if you look at central services, teaching, school, special programs, and employee benefits, that makes up about 85% of the new dollars in next year's budget. So relative to where we were last time, this is down about $250,000. So it represents right now a year-over-year increase of 4.7%. Last meeting, we were at about 4.9%. So a positive trajectory, but we'll kind of, I think, settle somewhere in this 4-6 range, 4-7 range, as we learn more over the next month. So here's just a visual representation of those functional budget domains. You can really quickly see that most of the money, the outflows of the district are tied up in classroom instruction and those special programs. And then the associated employee, employee benefits for the professional staff, followed by debt service, pupil services, the central services, curricular administration, and so on. So in accordance with our budget development calendar, we are going to take kind of a deeper look at operations and maintenance tonight. So the first area I wanted to look at is operations. So this relates to the building-based staff as opposed to the K-12-based staff. So when you see staff here, this is our cleaners, it's our custodians, first shift, second shift, and third shift. Projected personnel costs of a 10% increase for next year. This relates to the wage pressures that we've discussed around the minimum wage increases and then just the general staffing shortages that we've seen regionally. Utilities, we discussed last time and we'll kind of unpack a little bit more in a moment, but seeing a big increase for next year. So even before the events of the last week, kind of introducing uncertainty into the natural gas and oil markets, we were seeing big increases particularly in the fall. They had kind of dipped a little bit in November and December, but they're starting to pick back up again if you look at like the futures pricing. There's definitely some concerns there. So it's a, it's a big jump. I do think it's conservative. As you'll see in a moment, it's still lower than we've been historically, not, not so long ago. But relative to the last handful of years, it is a big dollar increase. Our service contracts, projected to stay the same. So these are like the controls that we have for the district, HVAC repairs, things like that. Professional development stays the same. Our BOSI's costs increased just $5,000. And custodial supplies are just the sort of consumable cleaning products that we have throughout the district. So the operations realm is projected at this point to increase $440,000 or a little over 11%. So here is a historical look at those gas and electric costs. You can see next year, we're projected to be a little over a million dollars again. It would be the highest we've been in about 10 years. But still, relative to where we were back in '07, '08, a little less total-wise and relative to the size of the budget, considerably less than we were back then. So while it's negative news relative to the last couple of years, as I said, it's important to have the context that it has been worse. So we'll keep an eye on it. This is something that we competitively bid, so we're going to get the best pricing. You know, we're a large customer, so we get better rates than your residential home. But at the same time, it'll be something that we're definitely going to be monitoring throughout the year next year. As it relates to maintenance, this is more like the K-12 spectrum. So it's our, it's our groundskeepers, it's the maintenance mechanics, it's kind of the labor foreman. Less changes this year on this side. Projected wage increases of a little over 3% and then everything else stays the same. We have a equipment replacement schedule that's in line. It's a five-year replacement schedule. Next year, we're projected to replace one truck, two vans, and an auto scrubber. And then we have projected repairs costs of a little over half a million dollars, grounds costs of $350,000, BOSI's costs of $20,000, and then general supplies of $115,000. So at this point, I will stop talking and I will invite Mr. George English, our director of facilities, to join us. George, that clicker should work, but if it does not, let me know and I can.
It's always the first trick of the night.
Thanks for coming.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I couldn't start out tonight without sharing with you the excitement of our new facility and the planning that's going into that. It is a little stressful, but it, because there's a, you know, we need to make sure we get it right. But, so I'll touch on that, I'll touch on our current funding, touch on our staffing and payroll, and then I, I have a few photos of our fantastic team to share, so. Yeah. So as far as the new facility, want to say thank you for helping move that forward for us. You know, our, our current facility clearly is, is one of the poorest in the county and so we, you know, really need that update and it's really exciting that we're getting to do that. At the same time, it's, it's, it's a, it's a heavy burden. We want to make sure we do it right because we get the chance to do it once and it's, we realize how important it is to do it right and to, to make sure it's good for our district for many, many years. So we, we did visit three different facilities with quite a lot of the team, trying to make sure we're incorporating and looking at the right things. And so we're, we're working hard with our architects and engineers on that. So thank you for that. Current funding, want to say thank you for that. Our, our staff in general is very pleased with the equipment, tools, supplies, what they have to do their job. And I want to point out, you know, and you're going to see our staffing again, but if, if it weren't for the equipment and the funding that's provided for that equipment and those tools, we really would be hurting. But, and I, in one of my pictures, I have a very expensive tool that I'll show you that if it weren't for that tool, we would have spent all of last week making a plumbing repair. But because of the $3,000 tool that we're able to buy, we were able to make that repair in an afternoon. So just want to say thank you for that. And then staffing, similar picture the last time I presented. We do have one custodian vacancy that we didn't have then. But I do want to point out that all of our vacancies since I've been here have come from retirements. It, I mean, our payroll, you know, our wage rates aren't awesome. And hopefully, we're going to be able to correct that with the next contract and then be able to start attracting some new people. some new people. But our people enjoy working at Penfield. We have a great team. And, you know, even though the pay isn't the best right now, they're invested, and I am super grateful for the group we have. So, and, you know, I'm, we did hire one cleaner recently. We're hoping we have a second one. We're kind of negotiating there. They, we thought the cleaner was starting Monday, and Monday, they sent an email saying, "I'd like $15 an hour." We had to say, "Ah, sorry," but the contract is. So we're hoping that this Monday, we'll have a second cleaner. So that, there is some movement, so I am grateful for that. Payroll-wise, I do hope we have a bump in the coming year, but I also hope that we can control our overtime a little better than we are right now. And if it wasn't for our staff that's committed to our district and putting in overtime hours that they are, that would be very troubling for us as well. So I want to really recognize our staff and thank, you know, and it's not every single one of them doesn't work 10, 15 hours of overtime every week, but a lot of them do. And so thank you to them. And so just, this crew's putting in a lot of overtime some nights. I feel bad for Jim Cleveland. He's our head groundsman. You know, it's a lot of weight on his shoulders as far as, okay, should we come in at 4:00? Should we come in at 2:00? What time should I call the guys in? They came in this past Saturday because it snowed all day Friday. There was a basketball game Saturday. So anyways, they're a great group. There's a couple of people missing. Jim LaForte, who's with the Transportation, helps us with snow plowing, so we appreciate him. And then Scott Alaco, which he's pictured later. So, but this group is what makes our parking lots and sidewalks safe for us. A couple of maintenance guys working, they, over the break, we put in a wall and a door to create a new office area in the high school counseling suite. You know, with all the needs that we have, they're just needing more space. And so thankfully, we have the guys with the expertise. Vitaly, who is pictured on the right, is our courier, and we don't have a painter right now. So he's on overtime most of the time, is when he's having to do this. He's sanding and painting for us. So I'm really grateful for him. And here's our plumbing repair. Scott Alaco is the one on the stepladder. He wears shorts all winter long. He helps snow plow, but that tool he's using is the ProPress tool that I referred to. And not every district is able to afford those. Not every district has those right now, but I can't tell you how much it saved us as far as time. And you can see the water dripping still. Normally, you'd be sweating the pipes, and you got to figure out how to shut that water off, that there's a valve somewhere that we close that's not, so then it just creates more and more work, and it just keeps building and building. So anyways, thankful for the team, but also thankful for the tools we have. So, and they were able to get this repair done, and no longer do we have a leak in the high school hall. So that was awesome. And then our head custodians, you know, their group, including, you know, the head custodians and the cleaners, great group of people, have really stepped up over the past couple of years. Jordan St. John, who is our head custodian at the, at Bay Trail, and Scribner is missing from the pitcher. He's a very tall, imposing gentleman. And so I, his grandmother passed away, and so I wasn't able to get him in the pitcher, but I do greatly appreciate our custodial team as well. So, and that's all I have for this evening. But, I mean, we have a great team. We really do, and we appreciate the support we have from our leaders here and from our board. So thank you.
Just to be fair, the reason that we haven't had many snow days is because your crew is so good.
Yeah, right. It's because he's a tough guy. Get it cleared now and get us to school.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it. Okay, so other side of the ledger as it relates to budgeting. The spring is kind of this art of trying to balance the expenditures and the anticipated revenues. So today is March 1st. We did submit the tax levy calculation that we had reviewed in the prior two meetings to the state. Don't anticipate any issues with that. As a review, it did allow for a 3.64% levy increase. So as long as we were to keep our levy for next year at or under that percentage, it would just require a simple majority at the May vote. At this point, if the New York State legislative budget that Governor Hochul had outlined in her executive address does match what she was putting forward, I do not think we're going to have to levy up to the tax cap. Obviously, there are caveats with that. I don't know exactly what the legislative budget's going to look like when it's due in a month from now, but I can say at least pretty confidently at this point that I don't think we're going to have to be up to a 3.64% tax levy. We are also monitoring, as I discussed before, she did propose the homeowner tax rebate credit. So that would be a one-time tax rebate to all of the residents of New York State that are homeowners. It's a tiered percentage based on family income, and then a percentage of the star savings. So whether or not you get the enhanced star savings or the regular star savings, it would be a percentage of that. I can bring a potential calculation to our next meeting, so residents might have a better understanding of what that could mean for them. But from preliminary estimates, it could be substantial, hundreds of dollars. Likely would almost certainly make up for any kind of tax increase that the school has to impart. So a positive development that we'll keep an eye on, and I'm sure will be part of advocacy efforts in the next month or so. And then here in Penfield, we know there is a reassessment happening. So we're going to work in the weeks and what will actually be months ahead to really understand how that affects the rates, the tax rates. So it is complicated. Penfield is just one of our six towns across two different counties. So we'll have some preliminary information hopefully at our next meeting as it relates to assessments. And then we'll have more information at our public budget hearing on May 3rd with updated numbers. Hopefully, that come out May 1st. But then ultimately, the board doesn't adopt a budget and tax rates until August because the real, the roll isn't final until July 1st. So we'll do everything we can to provide accurate projections, but in this kind of fluid environment, we'll have to recognize that there'll be probably a little wiggle between the numbers that we get next week and what the numbers are come July. So something that we always keep an eye on throughout the spring. So as I mentioned before, just some next steps on our budget. It's a continuous day-to-day process. At our next meeting, we'll review the BOSI's budget in more detail as we get more finality on what that's going to look like. As I said, we're hopeful for that early tax rate information and New York State budget news. We have a board meeting on April 12th. We'll have a budget consideration for the board to adopt. Our budget hearing is scheduled for May 3rd here at PHS. I think it's right at 6:30. And then the statewide vote is the third Tuesday of May. It's May 17th. This year, we only have two propositions on the ballot, the operating budget, and three Board of Education seats, two of which are three-year terms, and one is a one-year term to replace the vacant position. So Board, any questions or comments as it relates to the budget development process?
Board members?
I was actually curious about what George had brought up about overtime and like what that looks like currently. And then do we account for that in next year's budget because we anticipate continued shortages? Or how do we do that?
Yep. So to Mr. English's credit here, he manages it. It's not just, it's not just on the facility side. It's happening a lot in transportation as well. So a lot of our mechanics have been driving outside of their normal hours. So we've had more overtime this year than in past years, but due to the savings on not having those unfulfilled positions, budget-wise, it's been neutral at best and probably a little bit more in the favor. We really prefer to have people in those spots because, you know, the risk is, is that we're thankful that everybody is, you know, working, and we're glad they're earning some overtime, but at the same time, we risk burnout too. So we'd much rather fulfill those positions. I am, the budget does consider a projected pay increase. It does project hopefully filling some of those vacant positions, but at the same time, there is still money set aside for potential overtime costs as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Board members?
I have a question. So it goes back to our utilities increase that we're projecting. When our costs went down, and this might be for two reasons, was it in regards to or because of our competitive bids that we were able to secure, or was it due to some cost-saving measures that we were able to do as a district? Or is it, it might be a combo?
Yep. It's definitely a combination. So we do purchase competitive on the supply side for gas and electric. The other part of that is we have done some things for sustainability, converting to LED. We have controls that, you know, change the time when, if we know people aren't going to be in the building, it adjusts the HVAC. And then third, realistically, in the last five years, the market has been priced really well in the energy domains. A lot of that was due to just kind of hydro fracking, flooding the market, and driving costs down. It was just, you know, not so long ago that a barrel of oil was, had a negative cost. Now we're up over $100 again. So it's just kind of the ebb and flow of the market conditions. So I would love to take more credit for those lower costs, but it was primarily more attributed to just market conditions.
Thank you.
All right.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you, everybody. Which brings us to visitor speaking time. So as a board, we appreciate the comments of the community during the public session of the board meeting. Every individual that speaks has a vested interest in the education of our students. Your comments are important to us, but matters involving particular individuals or specifics of negotiation are not permitted during public session. Concerns raised will be referred to the district administration for follow-up or action when appropriate. Visitors may sign up to speak at a meeting by emailing the district clerk, Sharon Urkfits, with your name, address, phone number, and topic you wish to address. Registration will open at 8:00 a.m. on the Friday before the meeting and remain open until 3:00 p.m. on the Tuesday of the board meeting. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting and limit their comments to three minutes or less. The total of 30 minutes will be allotted for visitor speaking time. The board will not be responding to the comments during the session, but please be assured, we are listening. And finally, we ask that all speakers model the conduct that we expect from our students and school daily. Please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. Thank you. So we have, we have one speaker today, Ms. Kristen Turgen. Hello, Ms. Turgen. Please state your name and address.
Kristen Turgen, 67, Cabell's Drive. I came here several months ago to show support for this Board of Education and for the administration when seats were filling with people spewing hate over masks and critical race theory. I joined many parents who stepped up to say we supported anti-racism, curriculum, diversifying staff, and keeping our students safe during a pandemic. We came in the hopes that if you saw the number of parents and community members that want change, that you would act swiftly. At that time, I also said that I would be pushing for more. So I'm back. I'd like to at first address masking. I have three kids at Cabell's Elementary, and I know for a fact that each of their teachers is a direct caretaker for either a child that is too young to be vaccinated or an elderly parent who falls into the vulnerable category. That's three out of three. You have a choice with this decision. Each school district is able to make a choice. You are choosing to prioritize able-bodied, healthy individuals. I know there are neurodiverse kids that have struggled with mask-wearing, but let's be clear, this decision is not about them. It's for the loud people that don't believe they have an obligation to care for our community. You pride yourself on social-emotional teachings and talk about community circles, but it's empty and meaningless when the lesson given to my six-year-old is that he doesn't have any responsibility to the most vulnerable in our community. You are directly hindering my children in developing empathy, and now I have to work against this message. It is heartbreaking that our most vulnerable students get the message that they simply don't matter, which brings me to the issue of anti-racism and creating an affirming and inclusive environment within our school. We showed up months ago hoping you would act swiftly to make changes in our schools so our BIPOC students felt seen and heard. We are now beyond halfway, the halfway mark in this school year, and we are still having BIPOC students in all of our schools telling us daily that they don't feel seen, heard, or respected. You have an opportunity to change that every day. We are told these things take time, that you're working on it, and that we have to meet people where they're at. This would all be understandable, even acceptable, if we hadn't been asking for these changes for years, and in most cases, decades. Many of our BIPOC scholars are children of Penfield alumni. Why is it that their children are having to deal with the same things they had to deal with themselves decades ago? We are told Penfield teachers want ownership of the new curriculum and want to be the ones to create it, and yet, look at the demographics of our teachers in this district, in both elementary and secondary. It's 97% white. We must go outside Penfield staff, and we cannot rely on the free labor of the community members with these identities to do the work. We must hire and pay people who have the expertise from life to lead this mission. Without using this framework to explore all aspects of the district, without ensuring we have staff from underrepresented groups, without clearly and consistently creating environments where everyone feels safe to participate, it is all lip service. The Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance has requested a public dashboard to make sure the community is kept up to date on progress. We also want action from you, the school board. We want you to publicly endorse these efforts. We want you to participate in the anti-racist education that teachers will be experiencing. We want you to sponsor forums to educate our parents, students, and our community on what cultural humility is, and most important, on what systemic racism and white supremacy has meant for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Turgen. All right. That concludes visitor speaking time. Let's see. Monroe County School Board Association Committee Meetings, Information Exchange. Mrs. Dean?
Yes.
Thank you for taking that on since we had that opening there.
Yeah, and I was able to, Tom and I were at a very interesting information exchange on February 9th. So this was all about the solar eclipse that is going to occur in 2024, in April of 2024, and Rochester, New York is right in the path. And so what's very exciting, well scary at the same time, is the amount of people that is expected to flock to Western New York from Eastern New York and other areas, because we are Buffalo, Rochester, like they showed the map of this big, huge line of where it's going to be, which is very exciting, but it's going to pose some real challenges. The eclipse is going to occur on Monday, April 8th, starts at 2:07 p.m. and ends at 4:33 p.m. in the museum zip code of 14607. So various zip codes. It'll be off by a minute or whatever it will be. And that, that could be a school day, and it could be a school day where all the buses and people are coming to pick up their students. So the presentation was all about who's going to be involved, libraries, schools, community centers, to help coordinate the influx of people that are going to be here, how we're going to manage school dismissal. Is this going to be during a break? Were you, we don't know yet because, or do you know?
No, we don't, we don't know. That's one of the big pushes is that if it's a school day, they gave an example, I believe it was a Missouri area where the last eclipse sort of went through.
Yeah.
And it was like 11 hours of traffic to get out.
Yeah.
Because people typically leave within, within about two hours of the end of the eclipse. And so that falls at dismissal. And so, you know, how, just trying to be planful of what this could look like for our students. But on the same token, like just saying no school does become an equity issue in regards to, we also don't want students at home without any, you know, support staring at a solar eclipse because it will be bad.
Yes, and that was, yes. There's a very big concern about that because, you know, you could do, I mean, it would be kind of hard to stare at the... it would be kind of hard to stare at the sun without pain to your eyes. However, you can cause a great deal of damage. So that is a concern about having younger ones being unsupervised during the eclipse. Other things that, well, I should mention her name, Hillary Olson. She's president and CEO of the Rochester Museum and Science Center, and she gave this wonderful presentation. She says that what she feels schools need to consider are the school buses, that, like Tom just mentioned, that students are not stuck on the bus during the eclipse. And there's a lot more, you know, section five needs to be part of the consideration. Will, you know, sports events be occurring during this time? And other athletic events. And then the museum would like to talk to SED about no school that day. And Sherri Johnson mentioned that the district superintendents will work with SED to make sure that school officials are aware of the impact that the eclipse will have on the schools. And this eclipse is going to be, oops, it's going to, thank you, Barb. It's going to be profound because it's going to be a total eclipse, and it's going to be dark, and she says that the animals react, the insects start chirping and making lots of noises, and it's like this, it's amazing. It's just amazing. So, you know, it's not going to be something where people are, okay, yeah, there was an eclipse today. It's going to be noticeable, it's going to be big, and there's going to be lots of people who, there's people who come from all over the world to follow these eclipses. It's pretty amazing. So the museum will be speaking at the NISBA conference to make all school districts aware of the planning that needs to take place, and they would also like to speak with the regents, too. There was a question and answer period. There were a few questions about curriculum lessons and rural schools. There's, you know, certain considerations based on where certain schools are located. Here's what she said. The experience of an eclipse is, quote, "magical" and almost like a religious experience. To have the chance to experience an eclipse is an issue of equity. And the museum would like all families, schoolchildren, children in daycare, and adults to have access to the educational information around the eclipse and the opportunity to safely view it. And the museum will have, there will be access to the, what do they call them, the sunglasses or, you know, those safety glasses that you can safely watch the eclipse? And there's going to be a lot more information to come. But here we are in 2022, talking about an event that's coming two years down the road. But as you can see, like I, I was just excited to go and hear about the eclipse, but then when you think how it's going to really have an impact about school, work, animals, us, everybody, you know, it's going to be a very big deal, and there's going to be a lot of planning that needs to take place, and it's started.
And it could be cloudy then.
It's Rochester.
It's Rochester. She did say.
That is true. If it's cloudy, there is no eclipse.
Right.
There is an eclipse, we just can't see it.
It won't be, it won't be nearly the effect.
Yeah.
It could be a Debbie Downer.
Right? Well, no, she did bring that up, too, but I, I got caught up in the profoundness of it all and, you know, incredible opportunity should everything align, and we can witness it.
Right.
So, you know, there's a better than 50/50 chance, little bit better.
Yep.
So we're going to keep our fingers crossed, but nevertheless, lots of planning needs to be done, and that's what the presentation was about. Oh, wait a minute, we have in the notes here, let me see what it says. Another consideration is there is 49% chance of it being cloudy that day. If it is partly cloudy, we will see a little of the eclipse. If it is very cloudy, the experience will be that it gets dark. So we're still going to be quite aware of it. And, you know, with the preparations.
No, you need to be proactive.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I've actually talked to George English and his crew is going to make sure it's sunny that day.
Good. I think, I think that's, I think that's a great thing.
We just, you know, I, Catherine, really, I hope, you know, that enthusiasm, that was an incredible information exchange. It really was.
It really was.
And I came back and, and interrupted Dr. Maloney in a meeting because she was with Nicole Whitehead, our director of STEM, to look at, really, the curricular side of things, too, is an opportunity for, really to make sure, just, we're focused on Penfield, but countywide, this is something that I think they said, you know, like the next time it'll happen is 120 years from now, that it'll go through Rochester. It's really rare that it actually goes right. It'll, like Rochester is one of the peak places to, to view it. And so hopefully it's sunny, but even around the education piece of making sure that our students, K-12, can, can understand why, what it is, and I think it's pretty cool.
And we can, we can put out all that good intention right now for a sunny day.
Sunny day.
There we go. Unless, Tom, there was anything else you wanted to fill in? That, that was basically it?
No, I'm glad, I'm glad, Catherine, that you were able to, to work that and join because you've been a lonely superintendent at those information exchanges.
I know. No, and I'm glad I could be there, too. So that really worked out. Yep.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Catherine? All right, how, labor relations, Barb?
Well, then we go from the solar eclipse to labor relations, which was held on February 16th at the Doubletree. It was very well attended, including Dr. Putnam and Dr. Kenny were there. Beginning part of the meeting was just standard procedure. There were no status of current resignations countywide. So we went right into our presentation, which was given by Allison Marley Esquire, and it was about New York marijuana use law and what it means for schools. So there you go. And I should tell you that Nancy Pickering made sure that for dessert, there were brownies.
Just in case.
Just in case, yes, 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 yes. So Allison did an, an amazing job. I mean, it's a very complicated, well, I thought it was complicated, impact that, that is going to be going on with the marijuana laws. However, it has minimal impact on schools, but it creates a new section of the penal law under the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act, which also does not have much impact. Basically, you cannot use marijuana on school grounds. The impact on employment actions is that you may not discriminate based on marijuana use during off-hours. There are three exceptions. Employers' actions were required by state or federal statute, regulation, ordinance, or other state or federal governmental mandates. Employer's action would require employer to commit any act that would cause the employer to be in violation of federal law or would result in the loss of federal contract or federal funding. And then the employee is number three, is impaired by use of cannabis while working that decrease or lessen the employee's performance of duties or tasks of the employee's job position, or such specific articulable symptoms that would interfere with an employer's obligation to provide a safe and healthy workplace, free from recognized hazards as required by state and federal occupational safety and health law. Phew. So it is considered a controlled substance, marijuana, that is, under federal law, but New York State permits recreational use of marijuana. So that's where it got a little, I mean, tangled up. And there were lots of questions. There was also, there were also people on Zoom that were participating in this, and I could go into like all the things that are, that were asked, but there were a ton of questions, and I, you know, will certainly send you the results of the minutes so that you could see them. But the biggest wonderful thing that happened was that somebody asked about training, and there is training through DITAP, is that how you say it? And Penfield has used this program, and so everyone was told to contact Tom Putnam for the details.
Oh, really?
Yes, and I will send them directly to Brandon Fox, our security preparedness manager, who's in attendance this evening, so. But it, but it was, you know, I'll just share, is we've been spending a lot of time internally around the legalization of marijuana in New York State and the impact on our students, like our code of conduct, how things have to be written. You know, for me, it's really the comparison of alcohol.
Yeah.
You have to be 21, and it's not allowed in school. And the same would be for, for marijuana, legal or not legal, it's still not allowed in school, and our students are not 21, so there should be no reason. And we would work through that like we do for, for other violations of a code of conduct, but a lot of it is around education. So it's, it's kudos to our Delphi Rise partnership we have and working with our Delphi Rise Drug and Alcohol Counselors to really get some things out in terms of education, education to parents and to students. I think it's good, but this was all focused on labor, so it's really around the staffing side of things, like what, what does that mean for staff? And Barb hit it, which is, is it similar to, you know, alcohol? You, you can't bring it into work and drink it. And so the same thing applies, but it's just making sure that, that we sort of understand as we move forward and, and things are changing. And I would just say, related to this is, I just wanted to say, and the board's aware is, just a thank you to Marie Cinti, our new town supervisor in Penfield. I've been meeting with her now regularly since she took office, and, and one of those pieces we've talked about is, is Penfield, the town, did vote to allow for marijuana sales when everything does get worked out with the Office of Cannabis Management out of New York State, but they declined to allow for what they refer to as social clubs, so a place like you could actually go and consume. And so they're working very hard on the zoning around establishments to make sure, they do everything in their power as a town to make sure that establishments are not in, like walking distance of our schools. And so, you know, they're working through that, there's a long way to go before official things happen from the state and, and things are taxed and, and that, but, you know, it's a, it's a good relationship with the town. I think that's an opportunity just to share that I was able to share with her, sort of what we had learned, what we're looking at, and again, that education for our families and, and our staff and students is going to be important.
Any questions?
No, I have a comment.
Catherine?
Oh, no, did you?
I thought I knew it, I'm done.
Tom, I just wanted to point out that, or make a comment, that I think it's very refreshing and wonderful that you've got that newfound established, regular meeting with our new supervisor, because partnerships are very important to us.
Absolutely.
And I think that's really, it sounds like you just got off on a great foot with her tenure, and it's just great to be able to give her a call or.
Yep.
And let her know what the concerns would be to, to the district, no matter what situation is coming down the pike. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I think that's wonderful.
So I, it's a, it's a, it's been a very open and proactive sort of communication and partnership, and so it's nice because I'll be able to relay either questions to the town or from the town to the board as well as things come up, so.
Wonderful.
Good, good, thank you. Okay, which brings us to some new business. The first is the appointment of deputy claims auditor. Education law requires that the school district and BOSI's boards of education audit and approve each claim prior to payment. The district utilizes a claims auditor to perform this requirement. In the event that the claims auditor is not available, a deputy claims auditor can step in and perform the duties of the claims auditor. The district recommends appointing Judy DiMano to the position of the deputy claims auditor. So may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education appoint Judy DiMano to the position of deputy claims auditor?
So I'm all.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? The opposed? All right, motion carries. The next new business is tied to the, what we discussed earlier, which is the masking, the changes to the masking, but again, that's the, just the one part of the guidance. There is the impact of our reopening plan, that is impacted by that, you know, to, the reopening plan is, is pretty specific about masking. And now we have, as part of coping with COVID, we created a policy in October of 2020 that basically said we will follow state, federal, and county rules. And it also, you know, it said we will, the superintendent will enact the policies, I'm sorry, the, the protocols necessary to comply with those, and they could be adjusted as necessary. So as this, as Governor Hochul had kind of started sending the message out that, that would go away, our general counsel also provided a resolution for us to consider if we choose to. So, you know, basically, the first thing is, again, there's more than just the mask, there is all the other aspects of it, which Dr. Putnam talked about earlier. So the question is, from a board perspective, do we feel that the policy itself is, gives Tom, Dr. Putnam, the latitude and direction to make the changes necessary, or do, does, do we want to have this resolution? And that's, and really, that's the discussion, and the, like I say, you've, you've got the resolution before you, it's pretty straightforward. So, and I think after a little bit of discussion, if there's an interest, I can read it off, but before we, before we, you know, go any further. So I mean, so this is really to the board, what?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do, do you, and you may not know the answer to this question, because everything is, you know, but do you know what's going to happen with these reopening plans? Like, are they just going to be gone? Are they going to, like, do you have any inkling of what's coming down in this FAQ document regarding that?
No.
Okay.
I don't. Our understanding, though, in speaking with our, our contacts in Albany, is that the guidance is going to address the fact that masking is optional, and so the reopening plan would still need, we believe, still need to be updated to, to basically change required to, to optional. I, I would tell you that I think it's fair that there is not like a, a COVID police that's going to be reading reopening plans and saying you didn't change it, but it's best practice to change it. So, so this resolution came from legal counsel, the district's legal counsel, to really just say, it really, the big piece about it is that it gives the board, it directs the board, sorry, it has the board direct me to update the school improvement, or the school reopening plan in order to shift that to optional. And, and I, you know, as we look at our survey data, I didn't have a slide, you know, our survey data that we did for stakeholders being students in six through 12, because they bring their devices home and have access to email, and our staff and our families. You know, we were at about 55% wanting optional and 45% wanting required. There's a lot of caveats in the required, like keep it, like in the comments, it was like keeping it required for those who are not vaccinated. And, you know, we made it clear in the survey, like we can't, there's no way for us to, to determine that and, and keep that track of that. So I think, you know, I would tell you, I've been, this is with everything, as we talked about earlier, the change came and that we're still awaiting guidance. So, so where we are now is, the same with this resolution, that came out from legal services, I think on Sunday night or Monday morning, and now we have a board meeting today. So, you know, in terms of where we're at, I've reread the policy, I think we, you know, I can, our policy is pretty clear that we're going to follow the, the state mandates. So I don't want to overstep, but as superintendent, I, I am fine, I think we're comfortable holding off on the resolution until we are able to see the guidance, take a look, maybe the resolution has to change. So I, I would share that just from looking at this, you know, again, it happened fast, so.
Thank you. And then again, the general counsel provided this, she did not say.
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement.
Nope.
You know, it's not, it's not a, something we've got to do for, like insurance purposes of the week.
Nope. And I, and I would tell you, too, is that, that, you know, the resolution saying that we're going to follow the state mandate, you know, even if the entire board voted no to that resolution, it doesn't change the fact that tomorrow's optional masking.
Right.
Because there's no additional policy created. So, so it's really more of just, I think, putting it out and making it clear, and again, giving the superintendent the directive. I think our policy does cover that.
Yeah, I was just looking at that, yeah.
And, you know, not all districts have a board meeting tonight, so not all districts are looking at a resolution tonight because, because they don't have a board meeting until next week or even the week after. So I'm comfortable just on, on looking at this, and, and the question is, is saying, let's hold on the resolution. the question is, is saying, let's hold on the resolution, and then make sure that we have time to run it through and understand from legal counsel and be able to review the guidance as it comes out on what might need to happen.
Okay. So is there any other discussion, or if there is someone who's interested in moving forward of this resolution, let me know, and I'll read it so we can have a formal read and motion. So then we can just continue on. Is there any more discussion on this aspect of new business? Okay, then I think we can move on. We don't need to take any action. I think what we already have in place allows us to manage the changes to the masking rules and the guidances when they come out. Any other new business? All right. With that, may have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:48 p.m.
Some will second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.